Yeah, go for it.
I want to make sure she gives me that okay.
Don will be on.
We're good?
Yeah.
At this time, I will call to order the Hamilton County Council meeting for Wednesday, August 4th. Madam Auditor may have a roll call, please.
Yes. Brad Beaver.
Here.
Fred Glenn.
Present.
Amy Mosalomani.
Present.
Ken Alexander.
Present.
Sue Mackey.
Here.
Steve Nation.
Present.
You have a quorum with Mr. Schwartz not in attendance.
Thank you. At this time, we'll ask for an invocation and pledge by Ken Alexander.
Praise. Pray in your own way. Amen?
My presence is赐ified in the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I have a reading and approval of the minutes for our regular meeting July 7th.
Motion to approve.
Second.
So moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. At this time, are there any public comments? Seeing none, we'll move on to committee and officer reports. I have just a couple of things. While we were wrapping up budget hearings, and I apologize if I didn't see it prior to, but Steve Schwartz did send a text that surgery went while he was in pain, but he is now recovering nicely. So kudos to him.
And walking.
And, and walking, because yesterday was obviously a struggle for him too.
Cool.
Second there, I just wanted to take a moment and acknowledge Robert Eckert, who had worked for the assessor's office for over 20 years, who had passed last month, and just send our continued prayers and condolences to her family. We do need, one thing that we did not complete at the end of today's budget hearings, was discussion over the 2022 schedule for budgets. In the past, I think up until maybe three years, two or three years ago, we had typically conducted budget hearings in September, and that was moved forward into August. And the request now has been that we go back to the September date, with then adoption in October as we have this year. So we need an approval of the meeting dates with that adjustment reflected for budget hearings.
Move.
Seconded.
So moved and seconded. Any discussion about any dates? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. So make sure you put those in your calendars, ladies and gentlemen. We do have Mike here with economic development. I can't remember if this is where I said that I wanted to bring you up so we could talk about the Career Center and introduce. Can you say that?
Yeah, he's, he's here.
You both would like to come on out? That'd be great. I don't know if you were in there. Sorry. We talked in the past.
So I'm Mike Thidde, I'm the new vice president of workforce strategy for the Hamilton County Economic Development Corporation. I believe I've had the pleasure of meeting most of you since I got started in May. I want to say thank you for trusting us with the Career Center initiative. The moment it was approved, we undertook kind of a stringent search process in coordination with the county superintendents. At their recommendation, we have hired Kerry Lively here with me today to oversee that project. And frankly, I'll just turn it over to her to introduce herself to you all.
Thank you. Thank you, Mike. I have met quite a few of you as well. I am Kerry Lively. I am a Hamilton County resident, born and raised, a graduate of Hamilton Heights, and very excited to be able to come back to my home community and, and be able to establish the, the Center for Career Achievement for all Hamilton County students. So my background is in education. I've been a K-12 educator most of my life. Prior to my current role as the, the executive director of the Career Center, I was an employee of the state of Indiana. I ran and oversaw the Office of Work-Based Learning and Apprenticeship, where the goal was to expand apprenticeship and work-based learning opportunities for all Hoosiers. So really engaging in economic development, workforce development, and K-12 has been the pinnacle of the last five years, and I'm excited to bring that back to Hamilton County. Prior to the, the state work, I was at Noblesville High School over the, the guidance department at the high school. So I feel at home. I'm very excited about the support that I've gotten from not only the community, but, but, but you as well, not only the, the financial backing, but the, the support from a standpoint of this is important for our, our students and our community. So I'm excited to embark on this adventure, and the overwhelming engagement that I've had from business and education alike has, has been heartwarming and, and exciting.
Are there any questions for Kerry? I had the opportunity to talk with you when we were at the State of the County, and I'm very excited to have you onboard, so.
Thank you.
I look forward to it. Any other? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Seeing that our vice president is not here, we will move on to Highway. Do we have any comments or reports?
We did not meet this week, this month.
Okay. Finance, anything to add?
We did, we did have a, a finance meeting a week or so ago. You should have all got the minutes from it. Ken and I attended, and I think we have a solid plan, at least for the projects that are in front of us right now.
Personnel, we haven't reviewed. I'm trying to think since Steve was... We don't have anything to report. And then under miscellaneous, any items?
Yeah, I got something under miscellaneous. Where'd he go? Jason, come on up here. Jason, why don't you tell us about the vaccination rate and whatnot like that that you shared with me and Fred just a minute ago?
Well, one of the, one of the, I guess, try to keep some things on the positive. We are watching numbers. We are starting to see a few little numbers go up. But the nice thing for us in Hamilton County is those numbers don't seem to be going up quite as fast as the other parts of the state. The state just released their map update today with new data. We still kind of continue to be in a moderate transmission period. But one of the nice things with our transmission rates, we, that puts us in a yellow category. It keeps us in a yellow category. But all of our surrounding counties have increased to orange and some even into red. And some other counties across the state have gone into red. So when I kind of look at that part of the map for the seven-day positivity rate, it actually makes me feel good to know that our vaccination rates are the highest in the state of Indiana. We lead the state. They're right around 76% for our population in Hamilton County.
Yeah, 76%.
Their vaccination rates aren't going up.
Is that, is that for adults or for?
That is for the current rate of 12-plus of what's available for eligible population. If you calculate in the not-eligible population, of course, everybody, it's going to drop, but that still is around 56% for the county. And sometimes in some meetings, we do get some calls. We do have one, one of our zip code areas, and I'm sorry, I don't know that number, but it is at 94.4% vaccinated. I believe it's between the Westfield-Carmel area. And every once in a while in a meeting, the state tends to mention that. So it makes us feel good to know that, that our populations are being taken care of.
Thanks, Jason. I just wanted to share that with you. Mike might be watching.
Yeah.
Not only that, but I mean, that, the only reason that's like that is because of the effort him, he and his team put together.
Actually, the whole county team with using the 4-H building, the AMA, the Health Department.
Now, a few hospitals.
Buildings and grounds, every, it was, it was a county way.
Agreed. Absolutely. Absolutely. Thank you so much. Anything else under miscellaneous?
Let's go ahead.
I know, Mr. Nation?
I was going to go ahead and introduce our procedural bylaws to start to look. I did not get them done, but I wanted to take this opportunity to thank Chris and to thank Becca for their work on it. We've got it, we've now got it into a package where I'm going to go ahead and finalize that, get it back to Brad for comment, get it back to Chris for comment. And I'm hoping to get that out to you in the next couple of weeks so that you can then look at it, so that we can just start to introduce it in the next council meeting so we can start to look at it. And I wanted to probably thank Chris and Becca for their work on this, because without their work, I don't think it would have been this far.
Okay.
Are there any other miscellaneous? One last thing I should have done during president comments is just, again, thank the auditor and my fellow counselors. I thought budget hearings were extremely productive. And I just commend all the work that was done ahead of time. So thank you guys so much. Moved on, there's nothing on unfinished business. Item eight, refunding of Hamilton County general obligations, bonds of 2021, Series B, CED, and parking garage financing. Mike Howard is here to do the introduction of the ordinance and we'll discuss the distribution of required tax levy and financial information. There's no motion that will have to be done. This is, again, just an introduction.
No, Mike.
Need a motion to add news?
Explanation, but he gave the whole rundown to the finance committee, so.
I didn't think we needed the motion to introduce Don and Robin.
Do we? Oh.
Let's. Let's do it.
Motion, motion to approve introduction for discussion.
Seconded.
Well, sorry, I need a motion.
Motion, second.
Thank you. Go ahead, Mike.
All right. Over on the table here is some information prepared by Baker Tilly, who's acts as the, one of the CPA firms, does a lot of work with the county. It has information that's required by statute. I think it's probably more data than information. I think we had a lot more information in our memorandum, but if the public's interested in that, it's there for them as required by statute. We make it available. I, I gave you a pretty extensive memorandum, kind of explaining how this, how this flowed. But essentially, the goal is to refund three sets of bonds that were issued in 2014 and extend the payment schedule for those bonds four years. And that four years will generate the money to pay $12 million toward the cost of the parking garage. And I think in the exhibits that I showed you, that I attached to the memo, there's a lot of information there. First of all, if you look at Exhibit A, about five lines from the bond, average coupon on refunded bonds, you can see the bonds we're refunding is about, has interest rates from 3% to 4%. The next page shows that if we've just refunded these bonds, what would be our annual gross savings? And you will see under annual savings, if we just refund the bonds, you're going to have a savings of $4.292 million. Now, with the, the addition of the four years, obviously, we're using that savings plus the four-years levy, the same debt levy that's in place now, to generate the $12 million for the parking garage. And the one good thing about this plan is that there's no tax rate increase. There's an extension of that rate, eight semi-annual payments, but there is no tax increase because the levy to pay the remaining BCD bonds is already in place and part of your existing county tax rate. And I gave you a little history that that tax rate was originally to fund this building in 1990. And then when those bonds were paid off in 14, we did what we called the ABCD bonds to just catch up on some stuff, bridges, building maintenance, security at the jail, et cetera. So I think Exhibit C is, is especially interesting. If you look right in the middle of that column, it's yield. And that yield means the real interest rate. There's a coupon of 3%, and that's to help secondary marketing of the bonds down the road. But the yield is the actual percentage rate that we're going to be paying, and that begins at .24% and ends at 1,650 in calendar year 2037. So with these interest rates, and to give you an idea, Noblesville, which has just a double-A rating compared to your triple-A, just sold a two-year note for .46%. So the interest rates, I don't know how bankers can make a living, Fred, in this environment.
You just keep flipping them.
Do what?
Never mind. Well, you're flipping them out, ain't it?
Yeah, all right. So, and then in Exhibit E, I list the purposes for the BCD bonds, ABCD bonds, the A-bonds have been retired, and those are the bonds that are being refunded. Again, the ordinance is typical, bond ordinance, form of the bond, et cetera, et cetera, that is necessary to finally issue the bonds. The ordinance is, is basically your intent to issue the bonds. The statute requires that you must have a public hearing, not only at this meeting, but at your September meeting after we go through it again. And you probably will be tired of listening to me talk by that time.
And it needs to be unanimous, right, Mike? Like before?
No, not to, we're not suspending the rules. We're just introducing.
Okay, okay.
We're opening a public hearing, and then we will come back at your meeting, and it takes a simple majority to pass the ordinance and move forward with the project. We anticipate closing October 15th, which is the first day we can refund the bonds because of call protection. And with that, I'll stop. Answer any questions.
I don't have any, because.
This is generally the plan that the finance committee laid out a year ago, where we were having bonds burn off, and we would just put the, make, put the garage back into place. That, that is what Mike has effectively done. And so it kind of fits in the whole plan in the head. It all came together.
Any other additional comments or questions? Seeing none, we have a motion on the table. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Do we need a motion on the distribution then?
We need to open the public hearing.
I will do that. I just want to make sure. On item B, do I need to do something separate since we did do a motion on the, on A, since we weren't originally? Are we doing a motion on B, which is the distribution of required tax levy and financial information? Or is that coinciding with A?
We've already done that, and I made that part of, made those available to the public for their enjoyment.
Perfect. Thank you. At this time then, we will open the public hearing concerning ordinance CC-08-04-2021-A. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. We are good, sir.
That's all I have, except the debt, the information that I provided to you was assembled in June, and I talked to the underwriter today, and I said, are those interest rates still good? And he said, oh, they're probably still a little high. So that's always good news.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
We will move on to new business. May I have a motion for approval of vendor claims?
So moved.
Second.
So moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item B, looks like Scott Zarazi, on behalf of Attorney General Todd Riquita. Is he here?
Don't see him.
He is not here, so we will move on.
Scott didn't make it. No.
Item C, Resolution CC-08-04-2021-01, a resolution of the Hamilton County Council recommending the 2022 property tax levy limits for taxing units. This is related to binding and non-binding. You moved. Is there a second? So moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item D, Resolution CC-08-04-2021-02, resolution concerning the purchase of real estate for the 276th Street Dunbar Road project. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. So moved and seconded. Any discussion?
No.
Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Now we'll move on to an introduction of ordinance CC-8-4-2021-B, an ordinance of the Hamilton County Council prohibiting the submission of grant applications that require the use of county funds prior to consulting with the county council. Do I need a motion on this one, or can?
I would go ahead and introduce.
Okay. A motion to introduce.
I'll do a motion to introduce. Second.
So moved and seconded. What do we have here, sir?
So during, during our finance meetings, it was, it became clear that there was either unknowns or not complete understanding of the commitments that are, are being engaged in some of the projects and other things that we move forward with. And the, the goal of this, this ordinance is that, is not to be an approver, but to be one that's made aware of, of grants that do put the county in a position of having commitments that they have to meet so that we can keep a finance, a financial plan that is up to date with the different commitments that are moving forward. Our goal is, is to continually provide a, a, a very fiduciary controlled process, but at the same time, not stand in the way of the growth and the, and the other items that need to happen for us to stay, to continue to be the county that, that leads in almost every other category. So the goal of this was to, to do that and to provide a mechanism that, one, that it would either come to the council for those, or two, would come to the president to get a notification so that we were made aware and could provide our finance body for an opportunity to update the plan. Brad, do you want anything you want to add to that?
Yeah, the, the example that I will use, and, and we're not trying to beat up on, but, and, and we've talked to them about before, is our highway department, we give them money for engineering on specific projects, and they will do the engineering, and then the engineering will get done and set until they apply for federal aid, NPO, whatnot like that. And then it gets awarded, or it doesn't. But at that point at which it gets awarded, then we're responsible for the match. Well, if the communication doesn't take place that it's been awarded, they go on with the idea that, well, we're going to do this particular intersection. It's going to take $10 million. Nobody told the county council that we've been awarded that, and you're going to need to produce $10 million in calendar year 2024. It's assumed. It's not said out loud. At some point, it has to be said out loud that we need the commitment of $10 million on thus and such a date, ideally before we actually have to have it. So the idea that you've committed to, or you've provided funds for engineering is not an automatic commitment to supply any amount of money that might be necessary down the road. And I think it's, it's a situation where we're pa, we want to pass this resolution or this ordinance, but it's more of a, we need to improve the communication with our, with our departments as we need to know when you know.
And, and to add on to that, we, we didn't want to get involved in every single opportunity because we know, as if you sat through any of the budget hearings that we've had over the last two days, there seems to be lots of grants that we're applying for. It seems to be continually happening. And so there was, in, in the, in the resolution that's, the ordinance in front of us, it is a, in excess of $1 million. Is, is there, that was the one issue that, that's put in here right now, if that's up for debate? But that, that's what this is.
I, I'm not sure the million dollar, I'm not sure that that's helpful.
Well, I mean, if, if anything over a million, I mean, most of, most of the grant matches, I mean, does that million dollars, we're, we're going to be on the hook for, or the entire project, be what, what we're on the hook for? I never, I, you don't get too many of them below a million. I mean, that's just.
Well, I know that, but the, the thing is that there's grants that come in for the pre-tile services. That's under.
Right, right.
See what I'm saying? There, there's lots of grants that are just outside of this.
I'm comfortable with the million.
Yeah, I, I'm not, I'm not opposed to it. I'm just, that's kind of like, I'm not opposed to it if you want to put that dollar number on there. The key thing is, and I'll give you an example, 146 in Alsonville. We've talked about it for years. It was never expressly told to us. We've, we've been awarded this. We expect you to produce $30 million in this year until, oh, we've already been, we've already made commitments. You don't need to provide $30 million in this particular year.
And I, and, and while I can appreciate that that is the, that it has not been asked in front of this body, that, that information has been shared at times at, at the highway department with the spreadsheets that we get that are, that map out the project costs. And I know if we look back a year, that those projects were mapped out. And, and if we went and extrapolated that, we could probably find out what that commitment is. But, but the idea is that.
Are you saying the highway committees fell down on the job?
No, I'm saying that that information is shared, and it's going to that extra mile to say, what is this really commit, real commitment?
Well, I think it has to be verbalized at a county council meeting in some way because everybody else don't know. You can't spend, or you can't come up with a project for $5 million because it's already committed, even though it's never come in front of the county council and been formally committed.
No, and I, that's why we have the.
That's why we're doing this. Steve, are you, you're looking at me like you don't know what we're saying.
Well, I guess, I'm thinking about it from a practicality stance. So let's say an officer wants to go ahead and go for a grant, and it's going to be for more than a million dollars, but they need certain monies amounts that are going to be right now. Are you saying they can't even go and find out if the grant is available?
They can go find out if it's available, but we need to know.
They can't commit us to the grant.
They can't commit.
It's awarded.
How can we go to the, to the people that are giving the grant and say, we asked for it? Most of those grants will say, you are at least going to do 30%.
So wait, now, now, I, I want to, I want to interject on that part of it. So, so you're saying that you prefer that they go and apply without us knowing about it? And I, you know, I can see both sides, but I, I'm just trying, trying to be, kind of go by what you're saying here. So you, you say they should go apply, put us on the hook, and we only know about it and we're expected to fund it?
That won't work.
No.
We can't budget that right.
I'm not saying that, but I guess what I'm saying is, from a practical, I'm trying to think through exactly how grants. It's been a long time since I wrote it, right? And, but I'm trying to figure out exactly, is it, so the auditor's office, or Todd, could not go forward and entertain any discussion about grants without first coming here? Is that right?
If it's over a million dollars.
If it's over a million dollars, or give it to somebody that has.
Maybe, maybe the clarification here is, I, I can understand if it's money that is not already included in budget. So if, if she's going, if, if the auditor's going after something that is money already in her budget, that she's, you know, recognizes that there's an opportunity, that she could save the county money, applies for the grant, she's already has it in her budget.
Yeah.
And, and, oh, I don't want to stand in the way of doing that, running your, your department efficiently, but if it's.
If it's new money. And it's new money, and I haven't seen too many of these grants that are, are, are going to, you know, be held down by this because, you know, majority of them that are, that, that this type of thing pays to our highway. Because most of these grants, if you're talking about for a position or something like that, are 100% funded. So, and they're all way under a million, yeah, so.
And just so we understand, like, for example, Dennis, you're going after a grant, hopefully to take care of the body cams, right? He's already asked for that money in the budget to cover it. He would not have to come back in front of this body to do that. He's applying for that grant to basically save money and not have to spend it, but it's already budgeted. However, if he came before this and applied for a grant that was maybe a 50-50 on body cams, that, and it was exceeded that $1 million, he couldn't have applied for that if it wasn't already in his budget without coming to us first.
And, and this is probably because of my not doing this before. So Highway can come in front of us and can ask for approval of a $10 million project because it's past a million. And we can say, yes, you go look for the grant, and we've now encumbered $10 million?
No, no, we're not approving anything. They're just consulting and saying, we're going after this grant.
So if it's just consulting, why isn't that done through the highway?
You know what? He's, he's kind of looking at this through a very legal lens, isn't he?
Well, I mean, see, what I hear is.
I think the problem is it's not being communicated. The communication is what they're saying.
We have several projects that we've already paid for or are paying for the engineering right now, sitting on the shelf. So that's, we've already paid for the engineering, or we will pay for the engineering. But the project itself, they, they ask for other entities to fund it. If you don't alert us, or tell us, or ask us, yeah, we've got this project. We asked for federal aid on it. We may get it, we may not. If we get it, we've got to, we've got to match it with $5 million. If that's never communicated, how would we, we know to budget $5 million?
I started on the finance committee this year, and when we were talking about these projects, I said, you're not including X, Y, and Z, these other projects that were already talked about. And like, oh, no, we don't have it. And I say, no, yes, we do. Those are things we need to be planning for. And, and so I think there's, that was the, that was the issue that was coming about.
And I would say, Steve, if you have, because we've kind of been interrupting you. If there's more thought that you have, want to express, please do so.
We can, we can hold for a month, and if you want to think about it. It's just, we've got to be, I would say, asked if you're going to do a monkey bill.
And I have, and Brad, I have absolutely no problem with that and how we go ahead, because that's what we talked about through the two days of the budget hearings. Hey, let's go ahead and set it into motion, what we're going to do. I guess, the practicality is what's.
So we, I mean, what you're thinking, see, and I, and that's why I said just the legal standpoint. So you're saying that if we tell them that they could go apply for the grant, and you're looking at it from a council perspective, you're saying, we've already told them that we're going to give them $10 million.
Well.
Right, that's what you're saying.
Would the state board of accounts come back to us and say, you've encumbered $10 million?
I see, that's what, that's why I figured, the way I figured you were looking at it.
Right.
Right.
And, and so I don't want, right now, I don't have a problem with saying, go get the engineering, go ahead and see if you can get the grant, and then come back to us. I, I don't have any problem with that. And I thought the total. And I thought the total cost was always told to the highway committee. Well, maybe.
I don't know if they know.
Highway 37.
Yeah, I mean, that's, and it comes later, right? And then you've got overrun.
Once you're committed, you're committed, you know.
I think it's really not to establish a number, it's one just for planning. And it could be a guess at this time. It's not until the commitments really come in that it really becomes a little bit more fixed.
That's true. Now, think about it, too, not just highway projects, but other projects that might be getting into the large dollar amounts. Somebody, whether it be us, has to make the decision, we're spending 10 million on this or 10 million on that. If you've given both of them the green light, you ain't got enough for both. You have, somebody has to make the financial decision, which one we're funding.
And I have absolutely no discussion with you on that. I totally agree. I guess, again, I thought, in the way it's phrased, I'm afraid we're committing to something that I now have to put 10 million over in this comm. Because when that office owner signs for the grant.
Most of those are under a million.
Well, so you're telling me, well, an office owner can't commit the county.
Right.
Only the county council can. So I guess what I'm saying is, should we, if we give the approval for the engineering, and I know that isn't the approval for the whole project, but.
Sue, I mean, what if there was a waiver in, something in there? I'm just trying to reconcile what you're saying.
I think we're going to have to reconcile it on its own, right?
Well, no, if you had something in there that said approval to pursue the grant isn't necessarily approval for matching funds? Do you want something in there like that?
Something that, because I'm just afraid that somebody will say, I mean, we're doing this so we know how much money we could possibly spend. So I can see somebody making the argument, you said you're going to do four projects of 10 million. So you have to encumber 40 million that you cannot use in any other areas until that project either goes up or down.
So I mean.
And we don't want to, I don't want to put ourselves easily in a position.
We have, Brad.
Brad, could you come up and walk through the process of the grant applications that you put on the NPO?
I mean, I'm just, what sentence would change it, though, right?
Well, that's what I just wanted to be sure of. I don't want to encumber, I mean, if all of a sudden all our projects, we said outstanding X amount, even that we don't even know which ones are going to get.
I get what you're saying.
A grant. And I don't want to all of a sudden have this money out there that I can't ever charge.
That you're committed to technically, yeah.
Right. Because we've told them in the process, we've committed to it and, I'm sorry.
Please, Brad, if you could.
I'm listening.
Could you give us the kind of.
From a highways perspective, with the typical.
The typical, I mean, the.
Typical federal aid projects.
Yes.
Federal aid projects. How do we get information so that we can pass along to the finance committee in a more efficient way that plans for bonding and other things that we know we're talking about on some of these projects? So that they can go and get a realistic plan going forward. That, that's, the goal is to try and is to get the right information in the right hands.
Okay. Well, typically at the time of application, you sign, there's this commitment letter signed by the county commissioners that commits to the match. We submit applications for many projects, we never know.
I think I should keep.
Until we get one, till it's selected, that has been selected. Once it's selected, then we start putting together the schedule on, you know, PE right away, all that. All that's in the application itself. And usually these are out five years, so you're not looking at your match until you're five years out. So you have an estimate right from the very beginning because you have to submit an estimate with your application. So once we know that information, then we start going through the process of budgeting for the engineering and then the right away and throughout the remaining years. Typically, most of those are handled through our normal budget process. Some of the big ticket items like 37, 146 in Allisonville or not, I mean, they're beyond what we can typically do. So that's where we need, you know, the additional help of the council.
Right, I have a question. I understand what you're saying, so what we need to do is, is stay on top of the commitment letters from the commissioners.
Yeah, and that's not a problem.
Hold on a second, guys. There's one other thing we need to understand is they might be looking for to get one or two projects, but submit five.
Yeah. And we normally let you guys.
Well, because you're not going to get all of them?
No.
And if you want to explain that process, because that's, it's not, you're not going to get all of them.
No, you're not. I mean, because it goes through the whole selection process through the granting agency, which is typically the NPO. And they score everybody's applications and they get many, many more applications than they can fund. So they have to physically constrain their awards based on the amount of money they think they have. So we might apply for four projects, we may get one.
Okay, so here's a question for you. In the worst case situation, you applied for one, you got awarded, we don't have the money, what happens?
If you don't have the money, you're going to let that federal funding go by the wayside and you'd have to cancel the project.
Okay, there's no fines, there's no, put the highway director in jail because you didn't, you committed to have the money, but you didn't have it.
I don't think I go to jail.
The thing is, when you say that, what I don't understand is you said that there's a commitment, a matching commitment signed by the commissioners, but the commissioners can't sign a matching commitment, only the county council can sign that. So that's what, that's what.
Typically, they've been signed by the executives.
I mean, but they can't, only, only, they can't really commit with the money.
It's not, it's not a commitment, it's a, it's a.
What's, yeah, but what's the word then?
It's a friendship ring. You're dating them then at that point, aren't you?
What I, what I don't want to get this body involved in is selecting the projects that we're going after, getting in the way of it, just having awareness that so that when we come back up and they said, hey, we got awarded these two grants, all of a sudden the committee can open and say, okay, what is that total commitment? Reuters, this needs to be built into the financial plan for the, in the next six months.
Or, as Brad said, you could say, we're full, we can't fund it, turn it down.
That's, that is an option as well. Because we're not, we're not approving it at that time, we're just being notified of it.
This just sounds like I'm sitting here and as a new member and a member of the highway committee, I'll take for 2001 some responsibility that maybe there's more communication from me and my fellow committee men to the rest of you. I believe all those emails do, however, go to everyone with the charts and everything, but we, it sounds like it's a communication thing, we just all need to work together. And I make a pledge to be better at communicating and more out there with any information that's presented to me in the highway committee meeting or via emails, saying, hey, did y'all see this? And this is important, just so we know what's coming down. It sounds like a communication.
I think there is a communication issue, but I think what I'm hearing is, is in those highway meetings, would you, would the open dialogue be happening of all of these grants that would have been applied for that maybe five years? I mean, how much oversight do you feel like you have to that information in highway? I think we're just trying to prevent some of these large projects from going, us saying that there's a commitment as the word has been used.
I just want to make sure that our financial plan.
Is able to.
Is able to absorb it and that we are, and if it's something that needs to be bonded, because we've been pushing back away from doing this, if we have a big commitment that's coming up that we know about, that we're putting that into the plan.
Yeah, and that's one thing I want to say to my fellow council members, you're responsible for bonding. Now, the highway department can suggest it and the commissioners can suggest it, the county council bonds the money. So for somebody to assume that we're going to bond for this without ever saying, we're going to do that, that's going down, that's going down the wrong path.
But that's why we need to have those, what is the total commitment, so that we can actually make good decisions.
A financial decision.
A financial decision.
Because I've always felt like when, and I'm not one to beat up on Brad, but his department handles the big, the big projects, the multimillion dollar projects. Is that those decisions are county council decisions. What's cash, what's fun, that's a council decision. You just bring your, you bring your thing, your project and what the dollar amount is and we'll kind of figure it out from there. Or tell you, we ain't got the money, we're not taking that project.
Brad, I have a question, really quick. How easy would it be for you to give us a spreadsheet of every project you have, as of right now, that would not have been awarded, that you have applied for? That would be above a million dollars and ask?
Well, right now, the only, we have some projects that were submitted in 19 that they've not acted on.
Okay.
Those are the only ones that are currently pending. There's a call for projects that's opening up August 20th. And we do intend to apply for a couple of projects through that call. So those are the ones that.
How hard would it be to get?
And we don't know, the ones in 19 that we applied for, we don't know that we'll.
19?
Yes.
Yes, we don't know that we'll get any of those.
How hard would it be for you to provide that information to our highway department and say, we applied for this in 2019, this would be the amount? We don't know. How hard would that be just from a communication standpoint and forego this ordinance? I'm just, just throwing a question out there.
That's not hard. It's not hard at all. I've got that information.
Okay, so that's.
We can go at our next highway committee meeting.
Yeah, the thing about that is, if it had to be committed to, you can tell us, but on the financial end of it, we're not going to plug it in.
No, I understand, but that's still a part of the, I mean, that's what we're asking for anyways, is the awareness of it, right? So you'd have the awareness of saying, hey, they've applied for this.
I'm not going to hold money back.
No, and no one's saying that you should, but what's the difference in what this ordinance is doing versus him just verbalizing it to you in a highway meeting? He's basically telling you, this is the amount that we're going after, we don't know if we're going to get it. You could pencil that in and then when he comes back and says, well, hey, I told you that we had applied for that.
It's also not, not an issue to, at the time of application, to provide you with that schedule for the ones that are going in. That's not a problem.
So first off, I'm not, I think we're just putting this in for discussion.
Yeah, it's just the introduction.
Introduction. So we certainly have some language that needs to be worked out. And if we decide over the course of the next so many days that it's not necessary, then we can pull it. But we need to come up with a better way of managing that. So Brad, thank you for coming up with the additional information.
One more, so it's you, this was yours?
This was, this came out of our finance committee.
So where are you guys with it right now?
With introduction, this is the problem we're running into. And, and we're looking for ideas. Giving me a spreadsheet of possible projects that aren't committed to is not an answer to the question.
Well, I think I can appreciate that. It's just there, what we don't want to get in the way of is the selection of projects. We just want to be able to make sure that we can afford them. And I think we can work through that language.
Well, what, yeah, and I'm, I'm agreed with you, I'm not, on the highway committee, I'm not a county commissioner that gets to pick them. In the end, you only get as many projects as we've got money for.
Hearing that there's 2019, they still haven't heard. And if it takes them four years after that, you're taught, it's a long time before that grant application's been made and we end up having to pay. So I'm not feeling this.
Because the kicker comes in there, Brad, am I correct on this? Once they award that, they want you to start coughing up the money, even before the bulldozers are running.
When is the, when is our typical, when is our commitment, our match typically requested? We have to set that aside and encumber it, correct?
Well, usually you're five years out and you're four or five years out. So you just keep that in mind as to what's coming up in the future, as I showed you and mentioned yesterday, 2023 looks like half a year. And that's projecting out to when the awards are scheduled for and when the match would be needed. So you just kind of plan that on, when you get to that year in your budgeting cycle to budget, to try to budget that match during that period. Most of those can be covered by your normal revenues for normal projections for MVH and those kind of things.
Let's take an example then, and I don't want to keep beating this. We put this out here, you can think about it, we don't have to vote on it tonight. If the majority decides it's not worthwhile, we'll muddle on like we always have. Give us an example, Brad, of 146 in Allisonville, all right? You, we were awarded federal aid money on that?
Correct.
Okay. And right now, there's not a bulldozer sitting out there. When do they want us to commit county money? What year?
Well, and I've given you that sheet. That's scheduled for December of 2022, so we will need that match in December of 2022.
Okay, next year, they want us to commit money. So it ain't, it ain't five years down the road, is. Here, here you've been awarded, come up with some money.
And, and that was where, you know, the form, and that was known cost, when I was in highway department, it was a known cost and a member of that committee was a part of the finance committee, was not getting back. And that's when I came up and I said, hold on a second, there is commitments that we're not including in our financial plan.
You mean it was awarded to us?
No, that when that, when that information was made aware, when we were made aware of that in the highway department.
Okay.
And there, and, you know, without mentioning names, there, that person sat on the finance committee as well. And that's why I'm saying, to Sue's point, communication breakdown, if that was really a known cost, we should have been building that into our financial plan.
Or, or to them, we don't have the money.
I would agree.
I would, what if, what if you just said that, you know, you just changed the, changed the expectations to say that when you get a federal matching grant, you know, and current council agrees with it, that that doesn't necessarily mean that we're going, the expect, there shouldn't be an expectation that we're automatically going to give you the matching funds.
I think that this clearly, there, this is not something that we can vote on today.
Well, I know, but I'm saying, I'm just trying to think through it because, I mean, the one, the one thing that I thought about is if, and I know a lot of the grants go quick, but if you approve one and it maybe it's a year or two years down the road, you might even have, or three, four, you might even have a different, some different people that are, that looked at it, that initially, that initially looked at it.
Well, that is correct, and that's, that's the burden you take for taking an elective office. You've got to live with what the people who were there before are committed to.
Yeah, I would just say, and I don't think that, obviously we're not voting on this tonight, but, you know, we just set the expectation, like, just because you get that federal match, I mean, it's not that you come up here and just say, hey, I got this match, I need this funding. It's, you know, we need to, you know what I mean? We just change the conversation and more communication.
So I would ask this because I, yes.
Just as a constituent and a person that lives in Hampton County, so doing what they're saying, but at what point do you start jeopardizing federal funding if you go through these processes and you, okay, yes, we're going to do this project and then you change stream, you know, going upstream, it's like, okay, well, we're not going to do that. So at what point then do, do, does Hamilton County jeopardize?
Yeah, well, you lose, you lose credibility.
Don't come back and ask us because you don't want it.
Yeah.
That was just an idea over the ordinance, but we fund 99.9% of the ones that come in. I'm just trying to pump ideas outside of that.
I understand that, but that would be one of my questions, if you start to say, okay, no, we're, you've got that project, it's in the pipeline and you've done this and it's been awarded. If you start refusing that.
And state with 37, we made a commitment, we have to live up to our commitment. We might not like it.
But we voted on it.
Yeah.
And that's, and that's comes with all these projects. There's not a person up on this council that doesn't want these road projects, these huge improvements to happen. It's just the fact that they're understanding that early. And I, I only brought it forward and I, and I think we're, we're really, this, this has gone on very long, much longer than it needs to. We, there's language that we can either change, create a better tool for communicating to council so that, so that we can actually give that to Mike Reuters and others to, to better plan for our county's financial future.
Nobody gets to Reuters unless they go through county council first. Mike Reuters is a county council employee, they do not have automatic access.
I didn't say that they would be spending it, say it's that they can give something to us that we can give.
Brad, I know you mentioned that, I believe there was a meeting coming up, you just mentioned from a, the opportunity to apply was coming back. Just, could you just communicate with Sue and Sue can let us know if there's something that comes about at this time while we try to figure out where we are.
Well, I'll just leave you with the note that once we do apply and we compete with everyone in nine counties, including Marion County, and we've been very successful. Well, once we do apply, there's, it's certainly intended by the NPO or even NDA that you're going to follow through or you shouldn't even apply. I'll say that.
It does make sense. That's kind of like when the parks gets a grant from the state to buy park ground, then when it's time to close on the land, they don't hold up their end of the law.
I'm, you know, I don't think there's a.
No, there's, so I have a question of the auditor. So we obviously motioned for the introduction, but because we do not have an agreement on this, do.
You're just introducing it for discussion.
Okay.
You're not going to take official action on it until it's on.
So we just, at this point, are we using a vote then? It was moved inside head, so we would need to introduce.
Move the table.
Move the table and draw a motion or kill.
I need a.
I moved a table.
Second.
All those.
It's before the, there was a motion to.
Yeah, it was for the introduction.
So should they not be doing a motion for? So, do, should they not be doing a motion for introducing?
That's why we didn't, we weren't.
Or it has to come and, to be introduced and then adopted at a second reading?
You shouldn't have made the motion on the introduction.
Yeah, theoretically. If you move it, if you move it in front of the body, then it's, the body's going to act on it. I mean, I'm not Robert Shulz expert, I'm not the pro materi, but, you know, that's typically.
Well, we effectively do the same thing by table.
I mean, here's the thing, originally, we were not going to ask for a motion for the introduction, however, when Howard had.
I withdraw my motion.
That was, that was perfect, thank you, do you have a second on the second?
Yeah, according to Robert Shulz's order, a second supersedes everything, I mean, a motion to.
Table.
Table supersedes everything, but I'll, I'll acquiesce to our.
Just want to move on.
It's, okay, so it's now, we did not, this is, it's done, we're moving on.
Thank you.
Come back some other time.
Do you want it to come back next month?
Yep.
Um, pause for a second, we don't want it to come back as it is right now, second.
We, we, we've tabled, we've, we've pulled it.
We have withdrawn.
So right now, it's not, it doesn't exist, we'll have to reintroduce it in.
Whatever.
Whatever.
Okay, perfect, thank you, so we just lost about 35 minutes, just kidding.
We're not getting that back, you.
No, we're not. Item F, grant appropriation reduction transfer 144s, 1 through 10 can be combined, I have a motion to combine it. It's moved in second, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Now I need a motion to approve 1 through 10.
Motion to approve.
Second.
It's removed in second, and any discussion on items 1 through 10? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Wow, that just really shortened the meeting there, didn't it?
Item 10, additional appropriations reductions transfers, this time we'll open the public hearing concerning additional appropriations. Item A, there are three under general, first is a clerk transfer in the amount of $3,000. Is there a motion?
So move.
Second, so moved in second, and any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 2, buildings and grounds reductions, there are two in the amounts of $106,422. I have a motion.
So move.
Second.
So moved in second, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 3, the Sheriff's 144 Amendment, is there a motion to approve for discussion?
To move.
Second.
It's removed in second, and is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item B, Fund 1023, Hamilton County Airport Authority requesting $13,399.67, is there a motion?
So move. Second.
Moved in second, and any discussion?
Cares Act money.
Any further? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Fund 1122, project income, requesting $250,000, is there a motion to approve for discussion?
Project income.
Second.
Second, okay, has anybody talked to Ralph about this? It's quarter of a million dollars.
Oh, it's Ralph?
Yeah.
It's 250,000, right, out of the 15, I'm sorry, I'm trying to.
Ralph's never led me astray.
This is related to the entire inventory of electronic monitoring equipment, the above funding requests to purchase or place in equipment for a portion of the inventory is necessary as a major cellular network change from Global Systems for levels and code division will access to long-term evolution. In the next several months, we will no longer be able to have our existing equipment service. Any further discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Fund 1152, LEPC, transfer of 7,700, may I have a motion?
So move. Second.
So moved in second, this is transfers to pay vendor invoices out of the client arms. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Fund 1216, auditor ineligible homestead transfer in the amount of $10,000, is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
So moved in second, and this is just allowing money to be moved to supplies. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Fund 459, I'm sorry, 4594.4201US31276TIF, requesting $150,000, is there a motion to approve?
So.
For discussion.
Shouldn't the Highway Committee be stepping up on this?
Well, it looked, Steve Schwartz apparently was the sponsor, can I get a motion in a second that we can discuss?
You've got it.
Okay, thank you. This is for acquisition for improvements to 276.
I can read.
Okay, well, I'm just making sure you read.
Does Highway Committee have anything to say?
We didn't meet this month, Brad, if you come forward to talk about this project, please. And maybe then. Here we go. 276 Street between Dunbar and the yet-to-be new construction of the interchange is the corridor that's in question. This corridor is scheduled to be improved together with the US 31 interchange, we've partnered with NDOT on this, and we have our share of the project is from Dunbar to US 31. We're responsible to buy the, the land that will be needed to widen the roadway through there, so what this is, is $150,000 from the TIF in order to buy the land. The project is scheduled for spring, I think March 22, letting, and so we, we have got the right-of-way engineering information, I believe now, from NDOT's consultant, and it's up to us to go out and procure the right-of-way, so that's what this is for.
And the resolution to buy that property was approved earlier in this council?
Part of that property, yes.
Correct.
It's all, it's all associated, same project.
Just to, till we don't have to do it again, it's the same issue that we're going to have coming up as well, same, second, item F with the 421.
It's related to TIF, it was already been allocated.
It's a different, totally different project.
But it wasn't related.
Yeah, well, I understand, but same similar.
Are there questions for Brad?
Yeah, so, we, we appropriated 150 for a right-of-way acquisition, and then, how much more will we spend on this particular project into the future?
Well, the information I gave you before, the agreement we have with NDOT is for $3.2 million in the spring of '22, the letting of the project.
Is that inside your budget?
No, it's not.
Where's that coming from?
Well, that was, we met with Mr. Howard thinking the TIF could support a lot of that, we found out that the TIF can't support a lot of that, his suggestion was that you include that in your funding mechanism for 37. There has been a request for, that's what I put in the notes to you, Brad.
Included in the funding mechanism for 37?
That's what his suggestion was. The, there has been an ARPA request that we pay for about half of that, if whoever's doing those awards so chooses to do that.
Can I ask a question?
We, we, we don't have extra $3 million.
So let me ask the question if you don't mind, when you came here for budget hearings, and you knew that there would be a need to some degree for this amount of 3.2 that had not been allocated, right, how come it, what, this wouldn't have been brought up as a potential concern?
I didn't think I needed to as far as what I submitted for our budget, I'd submitted that information to you guys prior to that.
This is not, this is not, though, if you know this is coming up in spring, it's not in the current budget?
No, it's not.
Just clarification.
No, it's not, it's like 37, it's not in the, in the budget that I submitted.
So we got 3.2 million coming up next year, for sure, that we, if we don't, we don't have a budget.
That we don't have a budget.
We don't have budget.
And so, we obviously were aware of 37, but this specific project, though, you knowingly came in here knowing that the 3.2 was going to be called for, for letting in 2022, that there was no discussion of the fact that that's not in your budget now, and so we're just going to say, we'll spend it out of County General, I guess, or we'll bond, or we'll, I mean, I'm just trying to understand.
Yeah, I think it was mentioned in my cover letter too, with my budget, but it was not a line item in the budget that was submitted, so it was in the cover letter discussion.
That the, the total amount that you anticipate that's not in your budget for 2022?
Yes.
That was included in that?
Yes.
So there's 3.2 million that we, we got a budget now, if, so we spent the whole damn budget here.
Is there any further discussion? At this point, there's no discussion, I guess I'll call for the question.
Is that to buy the right-of-way?
Yeah.
The resolution was passed, this is already money, it's already been appropriated.
What?
That's what you're doing.
That's what you're doing now, yeah.
We are appropriating it now.
Correct.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
This is what we need, but.
I, I, the only thing that I would say on this is a perfect example of what we're having to discuss before, I, I'm telling you, the Finance Committee's got a general idea how to cover the overruns on 37, we don't have a general idea for another 3.2 million.
And we just sat here for two days in budget hearings, and that was never brought up, it was never put in the budget, and we sat there and did all these cuts and everything and thought we had the right number, now it turns out we don't, just, so, we did two days.
By the ordinance.
By the ordinance was ready.
Yeah.
Okay, let's move on. Fund 4598.430596StreetUS421TIF, requesting 772,142, is there a motion?
I assume this amount is in the TIF, right?
This amount is in the TIF.
So move. I did the TIF, I'm on the redevelopment committee, so we did, I approved the TIF for 276 and 31, I didn't think there was any extra money in there.
Well, it states that the amount available is that amount, so I'm going to assume our auditors got that covered. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Who was the second?
I'm sorry?
I was.
Thank you.
At this point, we will move on to announcements. Sheriff.
I don't have anything, thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff, Council Attorney.
I don't have anything.
Adam Auditor.
Of course I do.
Why, am I not surprised by that? We're all sick of each other by now.
Well, I guess I could.
Thank you.
Pass down, Brad.
I have a couple things, before we left hearings today, Dawn said that we had a number that we did not have for you concerning Janus and the Hamilton County Express Transit Service, and what I am requesting is for $668,748 to be budgeted in County General, so that it's a match for this transit, and then I would ask that the council reduce the health insurance line by that, by that amount. And this all goes back to, I've talked with Todd briefly, we had the 5311 rule funding, the federal government's changed it to 5307 urban funding, that's why the cost has went up, and we scrambled to get an RFP done and out, that's been done, but in order to move forward with the process, that's our 50% match.
So we need a motion in order to budget $668,748 from County General for the Janus Transit, and, as well, a reduction in the amount of $668,748 from the health insurance line item, is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
So moved in second, and is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, the memo is our yearly memo about the upcoming public hearing and final adoption, and we do need a quorum present.
You may not attend virtually, so.
Correct.
Be present.
Whoa.
Just letting you know, is there anything further, Madam Auditor?
I have one other thing, Dave Barteroff had contacted Mike and I, and I've shared